I'd like to call the June 1st Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Our first order of business is the invocation by our county manager, Ms. Sharon Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and good evening. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please be with all of our Commissioners during this meeting and grant them wisdom in their decisions. Lord, guide our thoughts and actions to accomplish our work and goals and to better serve others. We pray for healing and protection over the lives of our citizens in Onslow County. May your blessings be upon us always. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen.
Okay, we'll have the pledge now by Sister County Manager, Mr. Ben Warren.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize our elected officials that I've seen in the audience tonight. Sheriff Miller, thank you for being here. School Board Member, Mr. Earl Taylor. School Board Member, Mr. Paul Wiggins. And School Board Member, I think Bill Leneer is here. Thank you for coming. I can't see the whole audience, so I hope I'm not missing no one. We ask all in attendance to please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting comments during the public comment period should be limited to three minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioners' comment period on the agenda, which is at the end of the meeting. With no other items being considered separately, a motion to adopt the meeting agenda is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any Commissioner would like to have removed for discussion later? Here it now, I'd ask a motion now for, to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We are now at the Item 3, which is Public Comment Section. I will refer that to Ms. Sharon Russell, our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is our only public comment period for this meeting. Citizens have an opportunity to address the Board for no more than three minutes per comment on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioners' comment period, which is later on our agenda. And this evening, I would like to introduce one Speaker that has signed up for a public comment period. His name is Mr. Jonathan Lewis of 126 Melody Lane. Mr. Lewis, if you would approach the podium, please, and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Lewis. My address is 126 Melody Lane. I apologize if I go over your three-minute mark. I've been a resident of Onslow County since 2011. My wife and I were married in Onslow County. My daughter was born in Onslow County, and we consider this our home. The recent murder of George Floyd ripped open an unhealed wound to some and forced the eyes open of others. There was a lot of anger, rage, frustration, emotion that came pouring out over this past week. Protests, rioting, burning, looting, abuse, assault, compassion, crying, understanding, compromise, and talking are some of the takeaways I have seen. Are they all good? No. Are they all bad? No. For a week, we have watched the rest of America, and now it's knocking on our door. What is our next step? Do we continue the negative trend we see, or do we take the time we have been given to learn what works and what doesn't? Do we focus on the bad apples in the police and the extremists in the protests and treat them all the same? Or do we stand together to stop them from dividing us and accomplishing the mission of forcing them out of our society? When I started this, or when this started, I posted, "Keep telling me how they are here to protect us and how they aren't all bad." When my brothers-in-arms brought up the rioting, I said, "I understand them and to burn it all down." From March 26th to March 30th, I defended people destroying themselves in a fight to stop others from destroying them. I'm here to say I was wrong. I'm here to say people destroying buildings were wrong. I'm here to say police brutality was wrong. Why do I use past tense? Because we need to stop it now. We need to end it now. We need to move forward now. How can we expect police to police themselves if we can't police ourselves? I get it, I know it, and I understand it. I'm 6'3", 250-pound, 35-year-old black American. I live in fear every day I see a cop car. I've experienced harassment from the police. I know the pain people have from being silenced for generations. My mother was born in 1955. My father was born in 1951. I am literally the first generation in my family to go to a fully segregated school for the entire 12 years. This may be shocking to some of you, but it's a reality to others. The question is, how do we keep the history in the history books? How do we use, how do we show the world we are changing for the better? I said when this first started, and I still believe it to be true, the only end to this is action. Talking and communication leads to understanding and compromise, which leads to action. What actions are we going to take to ensure this is it?
Excuse me, Mr. Lewis. You only had three minutes, sir.
I understand. What actions are we going to implement? What actions are our elected leaders, our sheriffs, our police, our citizens going to demand? Me standing here isn't action. It's just the first step, which is talking. The letter from the sheriff isn't action. It's talking. We have to start somewhere, so let's start here. Actions I recommend. Formal complaint forms that can be taken and filled out without the assistance of an officer. And for the papers that you were given, I've listed justifications for that. De-escalation training implemented into annual training. Personal liability insurance for officers. A county-organized march with officers to show solidarity and unity as a community.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Lewis. I've given you a lot of latitude here.
I understand.
You've had three minutes, so your time is up, sir.
This shows citizens, you see, we are now in a two-front fight. On one side, we have police brutality, and on the other is the extremists trying to change the movement. This is a racism fight. This is a police fight. This is a Republican, Democrat, liberal, and independent fight. This is an American fight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Mr. Lewis, thank you so much. Chairman, that is our only speaker for this evening. That concludes our public comment period.
That's all the comments?
Yes, sir.
Time runs real quick, doesn't it, Mr. Lewis? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is our budget public hearing, which is, I'm going to refer that to our county manager, Ms. Sharon Russell.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight, we will have our public hearing and then have an opportunity for all of you to discuss our proposed budget. Before opening up the public hearing, I wanted to give some information to update you on where we are at the current time. As we approached this budget period, we were looking at, of course, the impact of the COVID-19 shutdown, and we did get some more information in the last day, and that is we got our sales tax revenue numbers, which would reflect March. We got those at the beginning of June because, of course, there's a lag in when we get our sales tax figures. Keep in mind, though, when we look at March sales tax, the restaurants were actually closed on March 17th, St. Patrick's Day. So we've got about half a month worth of restaurants being closed down. The stay-home order was not put into place until March 29th. So we do anticipate April will be worse, but March is not bad. We're cautiously encouraged by these numbers. We received 3.814 million in sales tax revenue. That is down 9% from the same month last year, but the same month last year was much higher than it normally is. If you look at fiscal year 1617, for the month of March, we collected 3.4 million. So we would have collected 400,000 more in this past March. And for fiscal year 1718, it was 3.5 million. So we actually are right on track or a little above what we would normally have gotten. As I said, 1819, we had a really high month in March. Overall, with our sales tax, we are still at 4.5% higher this year than the same time last year for our sales tax collections after nine months collected. So we've collected 1.467 more than we did this time last year. So we're still fine on sales tax. Our occupancy tax, just to give everyone a snapshot of where we are as far as occupancy tax, if we look at the last month-end that we've collected would be April 2020, it was about 1.7 million as compared to April 2019 was 1.9 million. So we're about $285,300 off the mark right now. So there is, of course, some hit to occupancy tax, and it looks like the first part of May, we're going to be another 100,000 out, so about 400,000 behind last year on occupancy tax. But that may, of course, recover now. We're just now getting into the season, and more folks are coming back. Property tax collections. Our fiscal year 1920 tax collection, as of the end of May, is at 98.4%. So that means we've already got 98.4% of our taxes compared to last year, which was a record high at 98.9% at the same point. But just to give you some idea, we budgeted 98.81% collection for this year, so we're quite close to being exactly where we budgeted. So property tax does not appear to be a major concern right now. Our vehicle tax collections are down about $122,000, about 13% compared to last year. But that's because we had recent legislation passed that gives people an extra five months to have their cars inspected and pay their taxes. So we will get that money. It's just going to be a delay. Another upside to report to you, we had Jesse Rue pull up what our requests are for permits. So our building permits, both for residential and commercial, we are still, as of right now, 18% higher than this time last year on having permits pulled, and we're almost 27% higher than 1718. So we are seeing economic growth still in our community. So overall, we think what we're seeing so far is encouraging. We do still have the contingencies in place for this proposed budget that I discussed during the presentation at our last meeting, and we'll be happy as we move through the public hearing and we get to the point where the Commissioners consider this to answer any questions you may have. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute, Section 159-12, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners shall now hold a public hearing on the proposed budget. All required legal notices have been given. Citizens have an opportunity to address this Board for no more than five minutes per Speaker on the topic of the proposed 2020-2021 Onslow County budget. And at this time, I will open the public hearing. We do not, at this time, have anyone signed up to speak on the subject of the budget at tonight's public hearing. I would like to make one call to the audience. If anyone would like to approach the podium to speak on the subject of the proposed budget, please approach at this time. Seeing no one approach, I will now ask, Madam Clerk, have we received any written comments about the budget?
We've not received any.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing for the proposed 2020 fiscal year budget and turn this over to you, Chairman Bright, for Commissioner discussion, consideration, and/or direction.
Okay, I'll open up a discussion from the Commissioners and questions or concerns or points of view on the budget. I'd like the Commissioners to, if they have questions or concerns, to address them to the manager.
I have one, Jack. The concern that I have is that I noticed something in the budget, and I hope that David McColl can fill me in or Jessica on. I see $40,000 for the Children's Museum, and I believe we've talked about this over the years, and they don't qualify for tourism money. But I'm willing to make a recommendation, if that's what the Board would like to see, is to take $15,000 away from the Children's Museum and give it to the Sturgeon City, who wants $50,000. And the reason for that is they haven't been able to do anything this whole, since the epidemic has started with the virus. They have lost a lot of people that were going to try to rent the place and use the facility and whatnot, and it's a great facility. And if the Board would go along with that, I still think that the Children's Museum is a little bit gray area, pretty much gray, but I'm willing, if the Board's willing to take $15,000 and give it to Sturgeon City to give them their 50, that will help them out this year.
Let me say, I agree with Commissioner Buchanan. Sturgeon City, if you guys haven't been there, initially, I'll be honest with you, when it first started my term as a Commissioner, I really didn't see a feasibility in Sturgeon City until I went and I attended some functions, and it serves a great purpose, and they're doing a lot of things, and they have lost money, and they need the help. We need to do everything we can to support Sturgeon City because, if anything, it's the closest thing that we have to a central area where people can gather and have functions. I know the GOP, we had a function there, and it turned out to be great. So I agree with you 100%, Commissioner Buchanan.
I agree, too. Sturgeon City, they are working to take themselves out of the line where they're receiving money from us, and this COVID-19 has put a huge dent in what they were wanting to progress forward with, to get away from having to receive money from the county. So I think if we can get them through this time, as they continue to have bookings, they're going to put themselves on, they'll sustain themselves, and that's their goal. But, you know, I don't think anybody had this on their calendar to hit them like it's done.
I would agree with the support for Sturgeon City. Also, I'd like to raise a concern, number 16, on the tourism request, the Onslow County Parks and Recreation Freedom Festival, 25,000. The fact that it's already been postponed tells me that they're not going to need 25,000 because there's not going to be as many people attend if it's not on July 4th. And so people need to know what their parameters are, and so I would think that we would adjust that number downward to, back to the levels of 2018, 19,000.
Commissioner Price, I will answer quickly on that matter. It is my understanding that with our occupancy tax for events, it is on a reimbursement basis. So you would not have that money going to them if they do not reschedule that event. So they would have to actually pay for the fireworks or whatever, the publicizing that they're going to do, and then we would reimburse them. But we can have, I'll call Mr. McColl and Jessica up to the microphone if they would like to answer, because I believe, Vice Chairman, your question, I'm not sure that it's been answered yet, is whether or not we evaluated as a budget team whether the Children's Museum was a tourism entity. And just so everyone knows what we're talking about, on page I-13 of the budget, the Children's Museum was requesting $45,000, but I believe the manager proposed did not give them any money under the operating requests. But they also requested capital of $86,800, and the budget team recommended 40,000. In addition, Sturgeon City had requested capital of 50,000, and the budget team recommended 35,000. So, Mr. McColl, if you want to talk about the tourism aspect of that.
In regards to your question, Commissioner Buchanan, on the museum, they do provide data to us in the applications. I think, and those applications are provided in the budget book this year, and it does try to show criteria that they're meeting, you know, the spirit of the tourism funding, which is, we've always said, heads on beds. They're bringing people to come to the community and potentially maybe stay at a hotel, and that's kind of the criteria that we will follow when we're looking at the different funding requests. So they do provide data each year to us, so we try to make a determination off of that data that they are generating potential occupancy tax dollars. And also, you get the benefit, if they are bringing people to the community, of maybe increasing the sales tax if they're spending money around the area besides just going to the museum. So, you know, we look at the spirit of, are they going to actually be generating, you know, the old heads in beds coming to the hotels and staying overnight to maybe possibly attending and going to the museum or going to other functions that we fund through tourism.
Still seems a little gray.
Again, they provide data to us that we analyze and look at to try to make that determination from year to year. But again, to have an audit of what the data they provide us, we try to use that as a gauge and just try to make our best determination off the data that we have from each organization to see if they are staying within the spirit of generating that occupancy tax dollars to be replenishing back to the county. But I understand what you're saying, though. I get it. Any other question? You're the, in terms of the tourism funding with the Freedom Festival, that, like Manager Sharon Russell was saying, that we're not going to be spending that money. It doesn't go to them upfront. They'll have to submit for reimbursement. So, you know, one recommendation we could do is, because it's not going to be happening, and I'm sure they haven't spent any funds yet in terms of, not that I know of, that they're going to need reimbursement, but we could put that in a contingency, and if an organization comes along throughout the fiscal year, we could always utilize those funds in a different area. If that's something you would wish to do instead of...
I understand all of that, but my point was, if I think I have X amount of money, the tendency on the part of some folks is to spend it if I think I have it. If you scale it back down, say, you move from 25 back to 19, that's all, I'm within a certain parameter. I've got a limon on myself, but if it's budgeted for 25, I might think I'm going to spend 25. If they had put 50 bucks in my account for NC State, I had a tendency to spend it, even though he didn't require receipts.
Just one option just thrown out there, too. You know, we could reduce it, whatever the wish of the Board is, obviously, so.
Karen, do you need a motion reference to what I like to do? Or how do you want to handle that? I still say let them have 25,000, give 15,000 to Sturgeon City.
Vice Chairman, what we would expect is that the motion would cover the entire decision for the budget. So it will, you would add, if you would like to change that part of the funding, add that to your motion to approve the budget.
Okay, we clear on that?
Yeah, I'm clear.
Okay. Mark, are we clear on yours about reducing it to 19,000?
Yeah, I mean, do you understand what I'm saying, the rationale behind it?
Yeah.
Okay.
The matter of fact, we can reduce the Freedom Festival to 19,000 reimbursable. We've got a lot of other events that's been canceled already that we were funding or we will be funding in July, but there's already been notices that those events have been canceled, like a couple of them I remember seeing, one was for Holly Ridge Freedom Festival fireworks. That's been canceled. Seems like there's been several others that's been canceled. We don't necessarily need to fund those, I guess, unless they reschedule them, so... But the reduction to 19,000, I think we, do we need a separate motion for that, Ms. Julie?
No, Chairman, I think I would just, I'm going to make a list, and we're going to make sure that all of those are included when we do our motion to approve the budget so that you guys can go ahead and discuss the rest of the budget. And as you pointed out, there are many events that have been canceled, and we've also had a reduction in our occupancy taxes, so it's probably all going to even out for us, we hope.
And I agree with Mr. Price, but I definitely like the idea of, let's postpone for a little bit, I want to be a little optimistic of not taking that off the calendar yet. I know that's a different conversation, but I agree with you, Mr. Price, reducing it, but, man, let's hope we get an opportunity.
I mean, I guess I would just say that I don't think, in my experience with our Parks Department, that they're typically trying to spend every dollar they have access to. I mean, I think I'm happy to leave the line number where it is and trust them to make that decision from a planning stage, and if they don't spend it all, we'll get it back. I mean, I think that that's a perfectly appropriate way to move forward as it's set up now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment on the budget. I would applaud the staff for the great budget that they put together for the most part, and I think it's physically responsible to delay a lot of our capital expenses. My biggest concern with the budget is the cut to economic development. We've all said that we're in favor of economic development funding. It's not the time when we're having difficulties to stop. We fund economic development at way lower levels than other counties our size. We only fund a portion of the economic development because we're in an economic development partnership that is also funded by non, it's also funded by individual businesses and investors. We're getting more for our money than what we're spending, and I would certainly like to recommend that we get our funding back up to 100. We cut it from 125 to 75 now, and I don't think we need to keep cutting our economic development funding.
If that's a motion, I would second the motion to increase it to 100,000. Is that in the form of a motion?
Can't do a motion. You've got to go figure it out when you pass the budget. That's what we were just told twice.
Right, so we'll add that, if the Board would like to add that to the motion, if you want to discuss that a few more moments. if you want to discuss that a few more moments, and then if that's another one that you would like to add, I'm just making note of that, so that can be included.
I think you have to leave it at the $75,000, because we took the 25,000, we were going to give them at the 100,000 level, we gave it to the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club. That's general fund.
The point of having economic development is, is a place where people can go that want to move to Onslow County to establish a business or to keep businesses there, and I don't think we could bring that in-house for 100,000, not based on historically what Chairman Bright has told me about what has happened in the past with situations. So, you, I would say we're getting a deal with 100,000, and that if you, sometimes whenever you try to gain leverage and you cut too much, you lose leverage. That's, that's what my concern is, you reach a point of diminishing returns, and in an attempt to gain leverage, you lose leverage.
I'm in favor of leaving it like it is, 75,000.
Same here.
Because our, our budget is just...
That would be mine.
We've cut, we've cut everybody, we've cut all the nonprofit, nonprofit general fund money. We've cut a lot of other people out of money, and we, we got to find ways to save money because we don't, we don't know where our revenue stream is going to be at the end of the year.
I think I'm hearing the consensus is that, leave it alone.
I agree with leaving it at 75, if you're looking for consensus.
Is that, I couldn't hear what he's, I couldn't hear what we...
He agreed.
Leave it alone. Have I heard from most of everybody, or?
Yeah, I, I agree.
Leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
Okay, with, any other concerns or questions about the budget?
I'll just say one thing, Mr. Chairman, that it's great to see the Board of Education here tonight in a very happy occasion, that this was taken care of real easily in our budget with the formula, and it's great when two boards work together, because it's a cooperation leads to success. So, I think it's great that the two boards were able to, to work on that plan and put it together and not a point of contention with anything, and we're taking care of Onslow County schools.
Just want to say something, Jack.
The, the other thing I want to say about the budget, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion, we've had workshops in the, in spite of COVID-19 and the pandemic that we've been going through, and I can't say this enough about the Onslow County staff, you know, led by Ms. Russell, for getting the budget together, because they've worked extraordinary hours, and this is not something that we take lightly. They've worked hard, they've worked all weekend, they, I mean, that includes Sundays. I mean, I've received many calls from Ms. Russell on Sundays, and they were staying ahead of the game to put this budget together, to include our staff, Julie and everyone else involved. So, when you get a chance, thank them. We've got a budget in our hands, we're happy with our budget so far, and we're just going to continue to march and, and deal with everything as it comes, comes down the pipe. But Julie and Sharon, thank you very much for everything you've done, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Knapp.
Any further, any further discussion? Okay, now, I would like a motion to approve the budget.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to adopt and approve the Onslow County Fiscal Year 2021 budget with the addition of funds available from the occupancy tax money for $50,000 for the town of North Topsail Beach in support of tourism, and give authority to the county manager to determine the duration of the hiring freeze and other contingency provisions. Authorize the chairman to sign budget documents on behalf of the county.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Do we need to add Mark's reference to the...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you would, if you would like for Mr. Price, or if he's, if he would like to, there was another thought to reduce the funding for the Freedom Festival...
To 19,000 for the Freedom Festival as well as a part of that?
And then, it was on the table about the Children's Museum, but I don't know.
5,000 to Children's Museum and 15,000 more over to Sturgeon City to make that 50,000.
That can be a part of that motion, however it can be.
So, I believe, just to restate what Mr. Commissioner Price's motion was, he made a motion to adopt and approve the Onslow County Fiscal Year 2021 budget ordinance with the addition of an appropriation of $50,000 of occupancy tax money for the town of North Topsail Beach in support of tourism, with a reduction of the Freedom Festival funding down to $19,000, with an adjustment to the Children's Museum capital funding down to $25,000, with that amount of money to go to Sturgeon City instead, and to give the authority to the county manager to determine the duration of the hiring freeze and other contingency provisions, and to also authorize the chairman to sign the budget documents on behalf of the county. Just to restate.
Thank you.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'd like to say second again. Second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like, I'm not proposing that we change it, obviously, but I would like if Ms. Russell could talk a little bit about the status of the COLA in this budget and the contingencies with that.
I'd be happy to, Commissioner Shanahan, and let me pull up my figures so I can speak a little more intelligently. Right now, we have in this budget document a 1.5% COLA, or cost of living increase for all employees budgeted. It's just under $1 million, it's about $989,000. But that is the budget amount if we were to start the COLA on July 1st, and under our contingency plan for COVID-19, we're not going to start the COLA on July 1st. So, your budget ordinance actually states that it will be postponed until September 1st, and then we will look at it, and the county manager and budget team will determine if we need to put it off until January 1st. What I would like to do, if this budget is passed, as the motion has, has been stated, I would bring to you as a board, the financial situation when we get to September. We will at that point have sales tax revenue, we'll have more information about property tax, and we'll make a decision if we go ahead and go with the 1.5% COLA. If we wait until January 1st, and we don't need the contingency money to fill any gaps that we have in revenue, we would be able to afford a 3% COLA in January, instead of a 1.5% COLA and on July 1st. But we can leave that until we have more information about the impact of the COVID-19 shutdown.
And that would certainly be, what I hope we would see happen, is that we don't have to actually touch that line item and that those funds would be available in their entirety at whatever point we're able to kick in that COLA and feel confident about it, which could, of course, cause the percentage to go up, because we're using that money that's being allocated here. And so, that's certainly the, the goal, I think, certainly my goal. We just have to see how those numbers and revenue numbers develop over the next couple of months.
That's correct.
Well, I said in our last meeting that our county manager developed a budget that has Plan A, and if Plan A don't work, we've got Plan B, and if Plan B don't work, we have Plan C. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of budget items that hinges on what our revenue stream will be, will be, be like this coming year. We don't know. And it's unfortunate, their budget has to be approved by July 1, by law, but we don't know what our revenue stream will be till after July 1, because we don't have, we, we just got the numbers of the sales tax in for March, and here we have April and May already passed, and we don't have those numbers yet. So, it's impossible to predict a budget when you don't have your revenue stream. So, that's why we have Plan A, and that's why we have Plan B. Normally, we just come in here, make a motion to vote and pass the budget and, and move on, but there's so many, so many avenues and so many forks in the road that we have to do it like we did tonight. And I thank you, Ms. Russell, for putting that together, along with preparing for hurricane season and preparing for the pandemic and everything else that's coming down the pipe. Other than that, if any other commissioner has any other item, we have a motion and a second. I won't read all the, all the things that's in that for motion, but all in favor of the motion that Mark Price made, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item five is general items, Emergency Transportation Memorandum. That's Ms. Sherry Slater, our assist, one of our other assistant county managers.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you know, during times of disaster, the county periodically experiences conditions where quick response mass transportation is necessary. You might recall during Hurricane Florence, we did a mass evacuation and had to move hundreds of our citizens across the state to other shelters. We did that, thankfully, with the assistance of a wonderful partner, which is our school system. We also, though, had to move citizens within the county from several different rescue sites. One of the things that we realized during that is that we could work with the City of Jacksonville as well with their transportation system. So, the MOU before you tonight is with the City of Jacksonville, so that we can work together and utilize both of our resources during times of disaster for the best interest of our citizens. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Again, this MOU would be only during times of disaster or emergency needs.
Okay. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
I had a note indicating we need to take a quick five-minute break, so I will adjourn for about five minutes. Please be back as soon as you can. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Thank you for your indulgence, for being here. Our next item is item number six, which is appointments for Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Chairman, at this time, as we vote on the FCPC, I'd like to recuse myself from any voting process, since my wife is listed as a member, and I don't want to say, I don't want to have any signs of biasness or anything like that.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Knapp and seconded by Commissioner Buchanan. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. And we'll move on with the appointments, I'll turn that over to Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. The North Carolina Department of Public Safety partners with juvenile crime prevention councils in each county to galvanize community leaders locally and statewide to reduce and prevent juvenile crime. JCPC board members are appointed by the County Board of Commissioners and meet monthly in each county. Each JCPC has the responsibility to review the needs of juveniles in the county who are at risk of delinquency or who have been adjudicated undisciplined or delinquent, prioritize community risk factors, determine the services needed to address those problem areas, develop a request for proposal for services in need, increase public awareness of the causes of delinquency and strategies to reduce the problem, and develop strategies to intervene, respond to, and treat the needs of juveniles at risk. The following individuals' terms will be expiring, and these same folks have expressed interest in reappointment. Ms. Kelly Knapp, substance abuse professional; Ms. Tondrea Leach, nonprofit representative; Mr. Linwood Foy from the Sheriff's Office; Mr. William Ross, the Commissioner's appointment. All of these terms expire June 30, 2022. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office, and at this time, I ask that you respectfully consider Kelly Knapp, Tondrea Leach, Linwood Foy, and William Ross for appointment to their categories for a two-year term on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, expiring June 30, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. B, which is Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a 28-member Board of Directors, which governs Eastern Carolina Workforce Development in partnership with local elected officials. It is the designated administrative and fiscal agent for the federal and state workforce development funds, which are appropriated by the North Carolina Department of Commerce to operate employment and training services in a nine-county local area. Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board has requested the appointment of Mr. Carl Zural, representing Public Employment Service, and Ms. Veronica Perez, representing the private sector. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. We respectfully request the appointment of Mr. Zural for the Public Employment Service and Ms. Perez for the private sector, for the two-year term expiring June 30, 2022.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Carolina Coastal Carolina Community College Board of Trustees, Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Over the years, Coastal Carolina Community College has had an outstanding Board of Trustees. Roughly one-third of their trustee members have been appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. One of those trustees is Ms. Debbie Ray Rouse, who for nearly 14 years has served. Having been a member of both the Building and Finance Committees, she has consistently provided vision and support, contributing greatly to the success of our community college. On June 30, 2020, her term is expired, is, excuse me, scheduled to expire. Given her record of, of performance and her desire to continue, it is recommended on behalf of the college's board chairman, Mr. Bundage Guy, that she be reappointed for a four-year term to begin July 1, 2020. Her application is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office. I respectfully request the appointment of Ms. Debbie Ray Rouse for a four-year term, which will expire June 30, 2024.
So...
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. There was nothing moved to the consent agenda under item number seven, so we had item number eight, the county manager, Ms. Russell, comments.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. First of all, I would really like to thank our public speaker tonight, and I'd like to thank our budget team and all of our directors and staff and all of you for everything everyone did to make the proposed budget possible. It's a lot of work, and it's a lot of work for finance and for our entire staff, and we appreciate everyone contributing to that. I wanted to also give our COVID-19 update for today. We did have two new positive tests today. We are at 110 positive tests overall for all of Onslow County, including all of our municipalities and the base. We have 3,236 negatives as of tonight. We have 49 pending tests, and of our 110 positive tests, 89 of those citizens have recovered. I'd also like to let the public know, who may be watching, we have had an unsettling rise in child abuse claims. Our Child Protective Services has been unfortunately very busy over the last few weeks. I would like to encourage families that may be experiencing the tremendous stress associated with all of the uncertainty we're dealing with right now, to reach out to peers, to have some assistance, Peers Family Development Center, or to reach out to our Department of Social Services if they need assistance. And if they are feeling stressed, there are also mental health professionals in our community that may be of assistance. I also wanted to let the public know that our landfill, the northwest slope of our landfill, experienced severe erosion and some significant damage and washouts during the flood events that we all experienced last week from the flash flooding. We have been working to have this fixed. We had folks out at the landfill working all weekend. They will be working 12 hours a day, seven days a week this week, to repair it. We are not closing down the, the landfill, the hours are the same, but please forgive us, there may be a little bit of a delay, because we're having to limit how many of the heavy vehicles can go up on the hill, and they have to turn around. and they have to turn around, and it's just taking a little bit longer right now as we repair that. And the last thing I would say is congratulations to the high school graduates because my youngest child is graduating tomorrow, Abby, and our Assistant County Manager Sherri Slater's youngest child Bradley will also be in that graduating class. They didn't get a lot of the hoopla that you usually get as seniors, but my daughter's still very excited, and she'll be going to NC State in the fall, so that's a good thing, too. Okay. What was that? So anyways, that's all I have for tonight.
Got to be one in every crowd. Who we got? Got anything else?
I think that's enough, since I think I got a boo. But it's okay.
To Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good to be back in our chambers tonight, in some sense of normal, even if it is the new normal. I think we've gone from Hollywood Squares to phone booths. So much has happened in the last two weeks, I had a hard time deciding what to talk about. I started out excited that the governor allowed me to get a haircut, finally, although he shouldn't have had the authority to stop me for so long. I do want to applaud those businesses that use the legal system to try to regain their rights, the churches, the salons, hairdressers, gyms, health clubs, and others. As I've said before, there's no logic to these shutdowns, and they are random, discriminatory, and should be unlawful. Then we reached this grim milestone of 100,000 coronavirus deaths. When I look at that, I have to, every coronavirus death is tragic, but I always have to look at things and put them in perspective. So when I look at the statistics, I see that in the four months that we lost 100,000 people by coronavirus, we lost 200,000 of our people from heart disease, and we lost another 200,000 from cancer. And I understand that heart disease and cancer research have been set back by over a year due to the focus on coronavirus research. It makes me wonder how many more will die this year because their treatment was delayed or by the shutdown and fears. Then came Minneapolis, and we were all horrified by what happened to George Floyd. We're united in our call for justice for his unnecessary death, but there were some who didn't want unity. They wanted division, turmoil, and anarchy. So the riots began, and focus is no longer on the tragic death that we all abhor, but on the death, destruction, looting that results from anarchy. I applaud the honorable citizens of Onslow County who have chosen to protest peacefully, and I call on all of our citizens to remain calm, respectful, and decent in their disapproval of what happened to Mr. George Floyd. Yesterday, I was privileged to attend church in the sanctuary for the first time in several months. It was great to be with my church family again. One of the elderly ladies told me that she was very excited to be back in church. She said, "I may die tomorrow of something, but I will not live my life in fear." Many of our citizens have been living in fear, but as the data changes daily, we are seeing that the coronavirus is not nearly as fearful as we were initially led to believe. Folks, in all this, it's noteworthy to me to recognize that our governor is willing to order law-abiding citizens to stay home and close their businesses while allowing lawless rioters to roam the streets in mass gatherings and violate his stay-at-home orders and steal from the very businesses that he has forced to close. Finally, this week, our great United States demonstrated the ingenuity and the creativity of our people by sending American astronauts into space from American soil for the first time in 10 years, showing the efficiency of public-private partnerships in accomplishing our collective goals. We live in a great nation. God bless America. Thank you.
Commissioner Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to the 2020 grads and to your kid, NC State-bound. I won't hold that against her. That's always a good thing, sending your kid off, which is a scary thing. 2020 grads, upperclassmen for two years and spent about a year in the classroom. Keep those grads on your heart and your minds, as things are a little bit different for them. But the biggest thing is they're celebrating, and they're going to graduate. Keep in mind, there are business owners that have not opened their doors yet. These are your small businesses. These are the folks I want us to remember, if they're closed, your little local pubs and bars and taverns and gyms. And remember, these are the men and women that put those jerseys on those little kids on Saturday mornings. It's always that little local family business that puts that little baseball player on the field, or that softball player on the field, or buys the Girl Scout cookies. So if they're not open, stop by, give them a few dollars. If you hit those restaurants and they're 50% capacity, leave double your tip because they've got half the business, and they've been out for a few weeks. We've got to take care of ourselves, and that's one way we can do it. And I'm not often at a loss for words, but we are at a tipping point, and Onslow County is a special place. We're insulated from a lot of things that take place in the world, and our kids graduate, and they go off, and they come back home, and they realize what a great place Onslow County is. Mr. Lewis was here speaking to us tonight, and I appreciate him coming in and speaking to us because that's what it's all about, freedom in America, to be able to come in and share. And for him to be able to come in and share his thoughts in a public forum cannot be overlooked, and we appreciate him coming in and sharing that. And I told Mr. Lewis, I cannot look into his eye and tell him that I know how he feels because I don't have a clue. But I do know that we've got to make some changes, and we've got to do it together. And we need some coalitions to come together to create change that's needed. So we appreciate him voicing his thoughts tonight. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm done. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Russell, for our budget, and thanks to all the folks that work for this great county here.
Thank you. Commissioner Knapp.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair. I don't even know where to begin, to be honest with you. It's been a hectic couple of months, but just bear with me, I'm not going to try to keep this long, but, Mr. Lewis, I really appreciate you coming in today. I was listening to everything you said, and the thing that struck me is how you initially felt, and how you initially felt it was the right thing to do, and then you changed your mind and said it's not the right thing to do in terms of rioting, et cetera. The George Floyd case hit me pretty hard, to be quite honest with you, because as a retired fed for over 27 years, I've never seen any type of behavior like that before in my career. As far as I'm concerned, in my humble opinion, I think he was murdered by a person portraying himself as a cop, hiding behind a badge, and that's how I feel about it. But the message you brought tonight rings true. Majority of cops, majority of sheriff's deputies, majority of federal agents, or whatever it might be, are doing things the right way. Let's don't lose sight of that. They're doing things the right way. They're doing it equally and fairly. I know the Sheriff's Office teaches that, and JPD teaches that, my agency teaches that, but there are bad apples that are out there. Nobody hates a dirty cop worse than a good cop, and that's how I look at it. And I hope, you know, Mr. Chauvin, Derek, whatever his name is, I hope he is prosecuted to the full extent of the law, along with the three other individuals that idly sat by and watched this man die, because there's no other description. I've watched that video over 15 times now, trying to digest everything, and every time I watch it, I am appalled by what I see, you know, people as cops just forgetting who they are. They're supposed to uphold the law, they're supposed to uphold the sanctity of life. So I want you to know, Mr. Lewis, I appreciate you coming in here and saying what you did. It took a lot of guts for you to come in here and say what you did, and I respect you for that, and you're right, we need to work together as a community. We need to work together with our law enforcement partners, everybody in our community. We need to just combine our forces together, work together, talk with each other, and open up lines of communications. That's the only way we're going to solve this. I, on the other hand, unlike Mr. Foster, can relate, being an Asian American. I can relate to the racism, I can relate to all the things that I've gone through in my life, so I fully understand that and I fully embrace it. People can't understand how I do it, but I do, okay? I grew up in North Florida, okay? And so you could go figure, in North Florida, it's a little different. It's kind of like being in the sticks, okay? But first and foremost, I'm an American. I'm an American, just like everybody else out here. It doesn't matter what your skin color is, it doesn't matter what your ethnicity is, what your ethnicity is. We're all Americans in here, we all have families, and we have to start working together and talking with each other to make sure that we continue on, that everybody's treated equally. It really hurts me when there are bad cops out there. It really does, because it makes all of us that carry the badge look like garbage, and that's what really kills me, because we have some great cops in this country, and I'm true to the blue forever, always will be. But we have to make sure that we police our own, and we police our own hard, because there's a different standard for law enforcement. You know, we live in a glass bubble, and we need to be scrutinized, and we need to answer up and own up to what we've done wrong. So again, Mr. Lewis, I salute you, sir. I salute what you said, and it rang true with me, and I appreciate you. COVID-19. One of the things about COVID-19 that I've been working with Sharon on, on a daily basis, and I appreciate her hard work, and Ms. Hoover's hard work on verifying statistics, we don't have the answer for COVID-19. I don't care what anybody tells you, we don't have the answers to COVID-19. We don't know this or that about this, you know, it's a pandemic. However you spin it up, I know about the heart disease deaths, I know about leukemia, the flu, et cetera, but the problem is, is we have a virus out there, and they're actually killing Americans, and it killed Americans rapidly at the onset of this. I'm very proud of what Onslow County has done to take measures to reduce this, by getting ahead of the curve and start the social distancing, start the sanitation, pushing programs, monitoring it, and we're very fortunate that we only have two deaths in Onslow County. It's unfortunate anybody died, but we're very fortunate compared to other counties, and I attribute that to our fast start on this, and I attribute our government for getting involved in this. There are a lot of opinions out there, and this is not going to be a debate on who's right, but people with autoimmune depression, autoimmune disease, like my wife and some of my close friends, it scares them, and it scares me as well, because I could be walking around testing, I could have tested positive and be asymptomatic and not even know it, but I could pass that on to somebody else that is more susceptible, and that's what scares me. I don't want to be responsible for someone else's death or pain when it comes to something like that. So I just want to applaud you, Sharon, and your staff for keeping me busy, that's for sure, getting those dates or those information, because you don't understand what they do is when they get that information, they don't just pass that information on to me or whoever else to publish, et cetera. They verify that information, and sometimes it's an all-day process, and we found that out recently. They physically get on the phone or go and verify each test to ensure that they're a Onslow County citizen. That takes tremendous work, and I don't think you people understand that, because they work on the weekends as well. So I want to thank you for that, I want to thank you for your dedication, and I applaud your efforts. Other than that, stay safe, folks. I don't agree with Governor Cooper on a lot of things, but we're going to get past this. We're going to take one step at a time and get this behind us, and I just pray for everybody to stay safe, stay smart, stay healthy, and hopefully we'll come out on the end very soon. Thanks for coming.
Commissioner Price.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for being here this evening and sharing your concerns about the community. Ms. Russell, thank you and your staff for presenting to us a budget that did not contain a tax increase despite the challenges that we face with the revenues, some shortfalls there in sales taxes, but thank you for the contingency plans that we got in place to implement, to deal with that. Congratulations to the high school and the college graduates as well, who either have gone through their graduations, being in college and high school coming up. Also to the teachers who are transitioning now into closing out school, I think online lessons ended either Friday or today. Yeah, I think we did a better job in Onslow County because of what we went through in 2018, the fact that we had to do some online instruction during the hurricane, in the period following the hurricane, rather, and that meant that our teachers were more prepared, and so our students received a better quality instruction across the state. I've talked to people, and they said some other counties weren't as prepared as Onslow was, and so we went through that to get to here, and so there's a positive there. I'm just trying to squeeze this lemon and get a lemonade out of it if I can. And so that I see as a positive. I think our teachers across the board did a good job in presenting online instruction, which I would consider very challenging, but that is something that's a positive. America is at a point where we need to be praying for America. We need to pray for America, we need to pray for our leaders. So I trust that all of you are praying for the President, for the Congress, for the Supreme Court, for our governor, for our state legislators, and for our leaders of local government. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Commissioner Shanahan.
So, yeah, over the past several days, our country has been grappling with the killing of George Floyd by Minneapolis police officers. Floyd's killing was witnessed by millions of Americans because there was cell phone footage of that event, and of course, that comes off the heels of the Arbery killing down in South Georgia, which was also brought to the forefront because of a video recording. And so I think we've got to ask ourselves, as part of this, how many things have we not seen, and how many things did we refuse to believe that were true? George Floyd's killing has been roundly condemned by law enforcement across the country, including our own sheriff, Hans Miller, who's here with us tonight. Sheriff Miller's called the killing unnecessary and cruel. The Minneapolis officers who killed George Floyd have been fired. Some have been charged with murder, and local officials there seem to indicate that there may be more charges coming. So over the next few months, the eyes of the country will turn its attention to our legal system, whose imperfections are never laid so bare as when dealing with matters of race. The killing of George Floyd is not an isolated incident, and one of the few things, unfortunately, that I can say about the future is that it's likely to happen again. We've all got to recognize that no community is immune to that possibility. The thing that I don't know is how to fix it, and I sure wish that I did. My faith teaches me to pray, especially in times like this. I do pray. I pray for George Floyd, I pray for his loved ones and his friends. I pray for every man and woman in our legal system that's going to have to be tasked with doing justice in this case. I pray for justice. I also pray for my countrymen who have to live believing that the institutions and people who are there to protect them are, at best, indifferent and at worst hostile towards them. I pray for the people who can't understand why they might feel that way. But my faith also teaches me that prayer's not enough on its own, it's got to be joined with action. And I don't know, as I sit here today, what those actions need to be. Maybe some of the suggestions provided by Mr. Lewis today can form a basis for some things that we can do locally. But I do know that we can't do nothing. This is something that we've got to grapple with, to wrestle with, and I do know that whatever solution exists is going to have to involve all of us. And so we've got to rise to meet that challenge, because we've got to do better. We've got to do better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chairman.
There's not a whole lot left to say, but there's quite a bit I do want to say. Mr. Lewis, I want to thank you for coming tonight. As you probably noticed, four of us up here, they're law enforcement officers, retired law enforcement officers. One of the things I can share with you, Mr. Lewis, is that the Onslow North Carolina Sheriff's Association, which is 100 counties, this is one of their phrases that they have in this letter that came out. This type of law enforcement cannot be taught. "This type of law enforcement conduct cannot be tolerated, must be dealt with swiftly, addressed by the law enforcement community and the criminal justice system." Our sheriffs in this county are working very hard with Hans Miller and the rest of the 99 counties that we have that have sheriffs. They're working very hard. We do a lot of training, I work at the college, we do diversity training, quite a lot, we constantly, with Chief Yonero, with Hans Miller, Sheriff Miller, doing this training all the time. We're making sure that we have the right officers on the street, and that's something I can tell you is going to happen. I want to change something else real quick. Sharon, you and the staff and everything that you've done for this budget is amazing. All of my commissioners that are up here, thank you for what we've all done tonight. And in closing, I'm going to read something to you, and see if anybody can remember what it is. I already showed it to one of the commissioners here. Returning hate for hate multiplies hate, adding deeper darkness to a night already devoid of stars. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. Anybody know who said that?
Martin Luther.
Martin Luther King. Great man, and a man that did not believe in any type of violence, none whatsoever. Peaceful. So please, let's everybody stay peaceful, and it means a whole lot to me, and God bless Onslow County. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for coming tonight and giving us your point of view, and like one of the other commissioners said, I can't remember, there's a lot said about George Floyd on the murder and his death, but if I knew how to fix it or address it, I wished I did, but I just don't know how to fix it. I was in law enforcement for 30 years. We never taught that kind of behavior. Commissioner Buchanan was a part of the Coastal Carolina with the basic law enforcement program. That behavior's never been taught. I had a hint, if I had a hint of that, on one of our troops, I had them fired. I made sure they were fired on the spot, so it's not tolerated in JPD when I was there. I don't think it's tolerated at the sheriff's office now. I think the sheriff does a very good job in making sure that you're not heavy-handed, and I thank the sheriff again, too, for the way you've responded to some of the stay-at-home orders that you worked with their citizens in order to let them have a knowledge of what the law is and what the governor's rule is. I just want to make it clear, too, that the county commissioners don't have any authority or control over the governor's orders. We had been asked to respond to the Holly Ridge situation, and that's another separate entity. Each municipality has their own rule of government. We only regulate the unincorporated areas, and the only unincorporated areas that we regulate, our law enforcement is the sheriff, and the sheriff is a separate elected official, and he works for himself and his people. He don't respond, we don't tell him what to do. We don't have the authority to tell him what to do. That's under the state constitution. So any disagreement with the state government's stay-at-home orders falls solely on the state legislators and our governor, and for whatever reason he wants to implement and keep those implemented, that's totally in his arena and his authority, because the legislators gave him the authority to initiate the state of emergency, and that state of emergency gave him that authority to close and pick and choose the businesses. Now, if you think I agree with some of those, I'll tell you I don't, but that's not for, don't mean I've got authority, I just can tell you what I agree with and what I don't. Well, you know it or not, Ms. Russell and myself, and I think Commissioner Shanahan was involved with, we've got several community groups that we meet with regularly now, and it's been brought to our attention about diversity, and this is no fix for what's happened, I'm not saying that, but we have brought a lot to the table with these community leaders, and we're working really hard to address diversity in Onslow County, in Onslow County government, and Onslow County employment. So maybe we can meet more with those folks and come up with some better ideas. If anybody has ideas on how to fix this thing with what happened to George Floyd, I want to hear it, but I just don't know how to fix it. You can't, you hire people, and you put them in positions of authority, and they do something like that police officer did, and that's just the way of life. People do things that they, you wouldn't ever expect them to do. But anyway, that's what we're faced with, and that's what we're trying to deal with. We're trying to address, I'm sure the sheriff has worked with his staff and worked with his folks to address these issues, and I'm proud of the way you've handled those issues involving that sheriff. Thank you for doing that. Other than that, everybody has said about everything that can be said. I've probably said some of the same things, but I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
That was quick. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We adjourn. Thank you, folks, for being here.